Good evening and welcome to our Board of Commissioners meeting for July 21. I understand we may have some sound technical difficulties that only will be noticeable here in the boardroom, but not for those who are participating by Zoom. Just want to clarify that has nothing to do with former Commissioner George Manos being in the House. Always good to see you Commissioner Manos. So with that and with that understanding, we will start right away and I'll ask everybody to be so kind to rise for their pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask our secretary to be so kind as to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. McKean and Ms. Durbin have asked to be excused. Mr. Churchill. Oh, is he not? Sorry. Mr. Corden.
Present.
Mr. Gabbard.
Present.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. McCohey.
Here.
Ms. O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Sinai.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Present.
Mr. Whalen.
Here.
Mr. Zella.
Here.
Mr. Bernheim.
Present.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So the first order of business that we have then is to approve the special minutes of the Board of Commissioners, which was held on June 2nd and June 23rd of this year, and a stated meeting of the Board, which was held on June 16th of 2021, as distributed. Do I have a second for that approval? Thank you Commissioner O'Neil. Any discussion? All those then in favor of approval, please raise your hand so signifying. Any opposing, none, the minutes are so approved. We then have a couple other announcements. The Board did meet in executive session on June 23rd, July 7th, and earlier this evening. We received reports from our professional staff regarding some litigation matters, some personnel matters, some issues pertaining to the Lower Merian School District, some updates on the coronavirus, and some issues pertaining to 1400 Mill Creek Road in Adigan Sewer Ismen. I'd like to note that our August meeting will be, for the Board of Commissioners, will be held on August 2 at approximately 7:00 PM, and then we will be off for the month of August. Applause.
Are you any in progress?
Ah ha. That little glitch that I referenced just surfaced. Anyway, that then brings us to the next section of our meeting, and this is what's known as public privilege of the floor. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the Board on non-agenda items. Those are matters which may concern the public, which are within the jurisdiction of the township. We would ask that you go to the podium and remind you that there is a three-minute invitation, and while we're in time, we hope that you will try to stick to that. So there also were some other comments that we received, but first, is there anybody who is here who would like to take the opportunity for public privilege of the floor? And again, those are non-agenda items which are within our jurisdiction. Please come right up to the podium.
What do you name?
Although we are, who are, may be kind enough to introduce yourself.
George Manos. Can you hear me okay?
Indeed.
I live in Ballackinwood, and you're all looking really fine. And I have to tell you, my car knew how to get here practically without any instruction from me at all. And I wanted to basically give you all a shout out for figuring out a way to do business here in the township for the last year and a half, when a whole lot of other operations weren't able to do that. And I'm thinking that you all acquired a new appreciation, either that or a love and help, love and hate relationship with technology, because you all probably got introduced, or some of you did, to holding meetings via Zoom instead of in person, but it's great to be back in person again. Nice to see you all. But talking about communication, that's the reason I wanted to address you during public privilege of the floor, because this doesn't have anything to do with an agenda item. Just wanted to, having now been not a Commissioner and being a regular citizen of Lower Merian, and trying to keep up to date with what's going on, I now have a new appreciation for residents who used to come before you and say, why haven't I heard about this before? Why are you rushing through this? And it's because, not that you do that, it's just I've discovered how really challenging it is to keep up with the business that you folks do. And one of the reasons is we no longer have, you know, weekly reporting from the mainline times. I mean, we used to be able to depend on Cheryl Allison to give us a really accurate, correct report of what went on during these meetings. That doesn't happen anymore. It only happens for maybe big issues like a project in Ardmore. But in terms of communication, now I understand, for example, and we have a planning commission meeting on Monday, and we have a board meeting on Wednesday. Decisions are made at the planning commission that only if you follow the agenda, that is, you go to the trouble of looking on the township's website, getting the agenda out, downloading the information for the planning commission, not for the Board of Commissioners, from the Internet, for each individual project, looking at all the details of the project, that you understand what it is that the planning commission is going to be looking at on any particular Monday. This is a challenge for folks, and I'm not sure how else you can go about it, but not only does that happen on Monday, but then on Wednesday is the first time those folks see any changes that were made by the planning commission that the Commissioners are going to take up. And I just want to give you an example. In looking at the agenda, and I have to apologize for this because it's just a huge coincidence, but on the agenda tonight are about five things I wanted to offer a comment on. So I called Jody, I digress for a moment, and said, can I address them all at once? But we talked about it, and we decided that for the sake of the record, for each individual hearing, it was probably better to offer comments during that time. So I'm just explaining to you all that if you see me up here a whole lot, I'm not trying to harass you, it's just the way it probably ought to go. But I saw something in the agenda that I wanted to inquire about, so I called, who do I call? Dave McCohey, my Commissioner, and talked to him. Dave said, call Chris Lesswin, he's got the details. Now, first of all, most people, I don't know if the first impulse they would have would be to call their Commissioner, but that's what they should do if they have a question, even to know that there's a question to ask. So of course then, because I know Chris, I called Chris and got the answer to my question. But in terms of notifying the public and keeping them up to date, and thinking about how it might be possible to do that, and thinking about what takes up most of your time during the Board's business, most of the time it's building and planning stuff. That Building and Planning Committee probably takes up more of your Board's time than anything else, and I'm just wondering, just an idea out there, if it might behoove you and the Township to consider televising planning commission meetings, so that people at least have two opportunities. One, to see what the debate is like, to see what the issues are, and then possibly to prepare themselves for a meeting on Wednesday. So it's just a question of how communication takes place and how the Board wants to, if it wishes to, sort of help people keep up to date with what's going on. And I just wanted to sort of put that before you as something for you all to think about as you go forward. Now, back to a regular type session, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about it, and I'll see you again shortly.
Thank you very much, former Commissioner Manos, who went over three minutes, but not that anyone noticed.
Hi, I'm Dan Mercer from Windward.
I'm only teasing him. Go ahead, please.
And one of my things is, ties into what George just spoke about. I was pleased to discover that Lower Merian Township now has a YouTube channel, which has all the Board meetings. However, Radnor, Narberth, and Hereford Township all managed to put up their planning commission meetings, zoning hearing board meetings, design review board meetings, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Lower Merian doesn't seem to be able to do this, and it would be nice if Lower Merian could match the standards shown by its neighbors. Also, I noticed there's only five subscribers, and perhaps a little effort should be put into promoting the channel. I was your very first subscriber, so. I also noticed that Hereford Township is soliciting public input on how to spend American Rescue Plan Act money. Is Lower Merian Township going to do that as well? They're soliciting ideas on how to spend the money. I think that would be an important thing for Lower Merian to do as well. So a few things from the CIP meeting. Commissioner Sinai mentioned that he was concerned that we weren't spending enough money on, you know, facilities for people, you know? And, you know, there was concern about, you know, debt service, you know, being too high and stuff like that, you know, and there's always this $100 million, we want to keep it under $100 million. But if the rating agencies are concerned about debt service as a proportion of your budget, then maybe just establish a ceiling and make sure you stay under it. I don't have any idea where you are in terms of whether the rating agencies are concerned, but I would guess that you're probably well under it. Okay? So, and things aren't getting done in the township as a result of being, you know, I love conservative budgeting, but, you know, perhaps we're a little bit too conservative. Okay? Another concern is the budget big enough? Okay? The township has, it's fantastic, we have hundreds, several hundred acres of preserved forest, but it doesn't appear that there's any forestry management going on. Okay? There are neighboring properties, either Bo Burn Drive or Har Zion, where stormwater is entering Mill Creek Valley Park and, you know, causing subsistence on the hillside. There are gullies all in that park that may threaten the integrity of Mill Creek Road. You know, it'd be good if we had Township staff that could assess the status of those gullies, and, you know, it's probably cheaper to spend a couple thousand dollars filling up a gully rather than repairing a road. Okay? And we should look at our parks and recs. Our playgrounds are well maintained, but they're looking a little tired and maybe need renovation, so. And again, trees. At the last board meeting, I talked to you about some trees at Penwind Park. There's a large tree, large dead tree overlooking the top playground. I checked today, it's still there, five weeks after I reported it. This is really unacceptable to have dead trees and dead tree branches over a playground for two to five-year-olds. Okay? You know, I shouldn't have to report multiple trees, email Commissioners, email staff, and come to two consecutive board meetings to speak on this issue. I also reported a dead tree, half-dead tree in South Ardmore Park today. Went to the park to see if anything had been done about it. No, it hadn't been done. Nothing had been touched. Okay? It's still half-dead. Then I noticed, looked over next to the basketball court, there's another half-dead tree dropping, you know, six-inch diameter branches on the ground. You know, that's enough to seriously injure somebody. Okay? These are serious issues, and they should be dealt with in a more timely fashion. The Ardmore Progressive Civic Association has a terrific little park that they've created, Pollinator Garden. There's a half-dead tree there, you know? Instead of me going to the trouble of reporting it, it was much easier for me to just climb the tree and cut the dead branches that were overlooking the sidewalk. So I really think we should do, can do better about these issues and do better before some child gets injured. Thank you.
Sir, and I apologize, others may not have heard as well, but I did not catch your name.
Dan Mercer.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to take advantage of public privilege? All right. I do then want to note that we did receive a written comment from Joy Medlock, representing Kimco in Suburban Square, supporting the installation of a skate park in the township. I see somebody else coming forth for public privilege, please.
And we will have one person on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Blumberg, and I live in Ballackinwood, Pennsylvania. I'm part of a community grassroots organization that we call COM, or Climate Action Lower Merian.
Excuse me, ma'am, could you speak up or adjust the microphone? I can hear you.
Should I start again?
Yes.
Later?
Thanks.
I'm Phyllis Blumberg, and I live, sorry about that. I'm Phyllis Blumberg, and I live in Ballackinwood, Pennsylvania, and I'm part of a grassroots community organization that's called COM, or Climate Action Lower Merian, and we plan to come to talk to you on a very regular basis because we are genuinely concerned citizens about the dire effects of climate change. And we need a comprehensive and systematic plan to address the environmental impacts of climate change. These plans, oops, sorry. These plans must be enacted at every level, and that's why we're starting talking with you in the township, but we're also talking to the state and the nation and around the world if humanity itself is to survive. Lower Merian can develop sustainability plans, and it will lead to Lower Merian's long-term climate resilience. Tonight, actually, I'm speaking to you about a very local problem and one that we can easily solve. We are asking the Commissioners to ban gas-powered lawn blowers, leaf blowers. While most people think that these gas-powered leaf blowers are just a nuisance because they are so noisy, and having been home now for the last year and a half, we know how many times they come to our neighborhood and they make a lot of noise. But that's really only the beginning of the problem, and noise is not the real issue. In fact, gas blower, gas blower, lawn, gas-powered leaf blowers are actually a bad source of air pollution because they have a two-stroke engine, much like a 1950's car had, with absolutely no pollution controls. Using gas-powered lawn blowers for just an hour creates the same amount of air pollution and smog as a car that was driving from Los Angeles to Denver. So that's really a lot of pollution. To reduce emissions, we need our garden care companies and certainly our residents to use electric blowers, or even to go back to old-fashioned, non-mechanical ways of moving leaves. However, the best solution really is to leave the leaves where they are. I've seen garden care workers blowing the entire driveway and walkway when there were only a few leaves there, and they easily could have been swept away. Sometimes they use these leaf blowers for a small household in Ballackinwood with not very much lawn for as much as three-quarters of an hour, when they're mostly blowing on pavement. Banning gas-powered leaf blowers in Lower Merian is a small but significant step, and one that will help us to reduce long-term greenhouse gas emissions. We must remember that all sources of pollution are connected and harmful to our residents, and especially to our workers who are using these gas-powered leaf blowers continuously. We must reduce greenhouse gases wherever we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to take advantage of public privilege of the floor? Please.
Wow, live. Debra Robbins from Villanova, just also speaking in support of climate action in terms of what I understand is coming up on an agenda in terms of the gas-powered leaf blowers. And just to add to that, I was asked to comment on the health effects, having worked in maternal fetal medicine for a long time, so that it's not simply a matter of noise and peace and smell. It's a matter of human health and the fact that these emissions, which are comparable to cars from the 50's, will affect fertility, pregnant women in terms of the growth of their fetus, hypertensive disorders of pregnancy, premature delivery, low birth weight, developmental delay, learning disabilities, childhood asthma, and so forth, and that's really just not even touching upon the adult health issues. So I'm just tacking that on as a, to emphasize the importance of it. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Please, step forward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Peter Craybill. I'm a resident of Ardmore on Williamsburg Road. I'm also a business owner and attorney. I'll have an office this fall at the DePaul's Building on 7 East Langston Avenue on the second floor, and right now I'm in Suburban Square. I also am this year President of the Ardmore Rotary, and I'm speaking this evening concerning one of your items in the capital plan. It's item C2, it's for the skate park, and this is a thing that I've also raised with Rotary as a project that we're interested in supporting. We believe that there aren't enough locations for young people to play and to gather, and a skate park would be a wonderful addition to the township. I'm aware that many of you indeed have expressed your support for the skate park, and thank you. That's wonderful. There really is a need for this. I think that some of the concerns that were raised by Commissioners, specifically concerning the relative size of the group that's interested, in fact, we surveyed, we had more than 500 of our neighbors that supported this. The support was gathered in a very quick survey, but we believe this is only a sample of the support that a skate park would engender, and we would be happy to create a further petition or other means to show the levels of support that we believe are indeed pervasive in the township. We also heard concerns from the Commissioners about funding. The funding that would potentially be needed to be supported with grants and private donations. We believe that we can get substantial support with grants, particularly given the success of the Quakertown Skate Park, where they had gotten approximately $350,000 in skate, in grants from the state, and we'd be happy to start working with someone from Lower Merian to do that, to reach out and find grants. We also heard concerns about the size of the park. Some Commissioners had mentioned that we could just start with a small park, and then, in fact, we've talked with experts about this, people who have otherwise paved the road that we're talking about following, and we know that Lower Merian, well, we think that a first step, indeed a small park could be a first step. It could get a lot of use, but it could also get crowded very fast, and we'd like to see that this would be a safe place and have safe conditions and avoid accidents, and so we think that the right approach would actually be to start with a large park. We think that the large park could then allow interest to percolate and have potential expansion in a network of smaller parks. But the large park is what we would suggest as the first step. We also heard concerns about the location, and we think that you could have a mix of locations throughout Lower Merian Township, not simply at one location, but that there would be the equivalent of a flagship location, and then have scattered smaller parks throughout. And finally, we would just request that you would have support for the skate park showed in your budget, that we would do more than just $30,000 or $50,000 in 2023. We think that both the timing and the amount is not really on key with what we're hoping to achieve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, anybody else? Please.
Yeah, I'm John Willis, who's up a couple points. I was born and raised mostly, most of the time in Ardmore, and I am here to support those other residents, and there are many of them, who oppose, who want to do something about gas-powered leaf blowers. They are a solution without a problem. For the longest time, there has been a far more effective tool, something that all of us are familiar with, and that is the steel-tined rake, works extremely well. In fact, my landscaper, who has never sound, never had a tool with an engine on that he didn't like, and I had an argument about this, and we then did a test to see who could rake up the leaves quicker, me with the rake or him with the leaf blower. And strangely enough, I won. And I really think that we should just join, you know, the legion of all the municipalities throughout this country, including noted, you know, municipalities like Northern Beverly Hills and Carmel by the Sea, and who eliminated these a long time ago. And so, one of the things that's really important to know about these gas-powered leaf blowers is they're really ridiculous, and the studies on them have been pretty clear, and that is, if you operate a leaf blower, a two-stroke leaf blower, there are several four-stroke leaf blowers, you have to, if you operate a two-stroke leaf blower for about 30 minutes, it releases the same amount of pollutants as an F-150 Ford pickup truck would if you went from New Orleans to Los Angeles. That has been studied, and it's been based, and it's based on basically a company who's basically pro internal combustion, and that would be Edmunds. Another thing is, the decibels on those things are absolutely ridiculous. No one likes them, and certainly not the poor, well, I'm not just gonna say poor, but the people who are asked to, you know, use them day in and day out. It's Lower Merian Township, let's get rid of these things. I mean, practically every forward-thinking community has, why haven't we? If you're not gonna get rid of them, at least put some restrictions that they require to be four strokes, or, this is a very, very novel concept, it's really, really in the early development stage, but they're actually, this, there are actually machines now that are replacing internal combustion engines with batteries, and they're actually gas, they're actually battery-powered leaf blowers. I know it's a really surprising concept, but it's out there. Let's move forward, let's get this done, let's do something about, to make this community better.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Anybody else? Please, come forward.
Hi, my name is Shawna Usher. I live in Penn Valley. I am here to strongly oppose commercial-grade gas-powered leaf blowers. However, I am reluctant to speak this evening because I have spoken several other times over the past years, over the past 10 years, to the Township and Commissioners, who have shown little to no interest in this problem. I have the leaf blowers wake me every morning at 8:00 AM sharp, and that is every morning of every day. The only day our neighborhood peace was not swallowed by the roar of leaf blowers was Father's Day of this year, 2021. We were stunned by the silence and couldn't stop talking about it because peace in our neighborhood no longer exists. So just this morning, I was woken up at 8:00 or 8:00 AM, as usual, by the leaf blowers. By about 9:30, I had wandered outside with my cup of coffee, and I thought, you know what? Let me get out my iPhone and record some of this. This is 9:45. Now, keep in mind, at this point, already four leaf blower companies have come to my This is 11:12. This noise has not ceased the entire morning. Now, it's not nearly as loud as it is in person. This goes on all day in my Penn Valley neighborhood, every day, except for Father's Day of this year. I cannot believe that we are putting up with this. Truly, I, I, I have been are putting up with this. Truly, I, I have been horrified for 10 years over this. I think the most important point that I can make tonight is that anyone who doesn't think the noise and emissions pollution from these gas-powered pieces of equipment are not a huge problem, are people who are not assaulted by it, day after day after day. I'm going to, I'm going to read this paragraph right quickly, because you should hear it. About a year ago, neighboring property across the street, three parcels to our left, had a company blowing random leaves and grass clippings. This company decided that running six commercial gas-powered leaf blowers at one time would be the best use of their time. The roar was indescribable. I called the owner of the landscape company and was told they were being paid by our neighbors to make this noise. Then I called the township to request a decibel reading. Instead, they sent an officer, which was not my intention. The officer told me that the township has one decibel reader. No one seems to know its location at any given time. Also, if it is found, it has to be accompanied by employees of the township. Therefore, it would be a slow parade of protocol, which would arrive at the property site too late to record anything. This is an embarrassment. I hope that Lower Marion is able to keep up with the times because it's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address the Board of Public Privilege? Jody, you indicated there was somebody online?
Yes, we have Ms. Isabel. Yep.
Ms. Melvin, if you can unmute yourself, please.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Isabel Melvin, WOPA. Good evening, Board of Commissioners and Township staff. Thank you for all you do for our township, especially Jody Kelly, for her efficient support in getting our banning of gas-powered leaf blowers petition to our township leaders, and for setting up the virtual meeting link. Also, I'd like to thank Commissioner Todd Sinai and Jen Pavau at the EAC for organizing a meeting last year, exploring the effects of gas-powered leaf, our lawn equipment. I personally have been thinking about this for a long time. It is not an easy one to tackle, a worthwhile one, though. In my journey to promote a ban on gas-powered leaf blowers, I focused on the peace and quiet I would enjoy while on my porch, sipping my morning coffee. I have discovered much more on this journey. Mike, my faithful lawn guy, is the person most affected by the harmful two-stroke gas-powered leaf blower. He breathes in the toxic fumes and exposes his ears to the high-decibel noise, day in and day out. These harmful effects to humans has been addressed in our petition of 250 signers. When I see Mike's truck, I think grateful for Mike. He will do the tough job that I don't want to do to keep my lawn tidy. While doing my research on a ban proposal, I asked him how he felt about the fumes and noise. He said he's used to it, and changing to another method would affect his bottom line. My sense is, he has always done mow and blow, and doesn't want to think about how it affects his lungs and ears. It is his livelihood. He always thanks me for my concern. We are a township of wealth and privilege. We should be leaders. We need to step up and protect the health and welfare of workers like Mike, who live and work in Lower Marion. I agree with suggestions. The people at 73 East Lancaster Avenue in Ardmore need to inform and educate residents of the harmful effects of gas-powered leaf blowers outlined in our petition. The harmful effects not only harm us, but the web, health and welfare of lawn care workers like Mike. We need to ask ourselves, would we want our sons, daughters, fathers, mothers, husbands, wives exposed to this? People have a right to know. Number two, the people at 73 East Lancaster Avenue need to remind our lawn care companies of the hazards they're exposed to, and provide them with the many incentives available for them to switch from gas to battery-powered lawn equipment. People have a right to know. Number three, we need to do outreach in Lower Marion Township to educate residents of reducing the lawn and replacing it with pollinator gardens. Lawns take on so much energy. Gas-powered leaf blowers are one of them. I am no green thumb. I started a pollinator garden last year. Once it gets going, there's no mowing and maintenance. And I ask Mike not to use the gas-powered leaf blower. He uses a broom, and it takes about five to eight minutes. Come, climate action, Lower Marion, a neighbor's group, has many resources on its website. This would be a really good place to start, to research incentives for lawn care workers to make the switch, and help residents get a pollinator garden going.
Ms. Melvin, if you could, if you could just wrap up, please, do your time. Thank you very much.
Sure. We need to get this message to our residents, and it must come from the folks at 73 East Lancaster Avenue in Ardmore. I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do you have anybody else who was online?
Shawna McMurtry.
Okay. All right. Ms. McMurtry, please announce, introduce yourself and address the board.
Thank you so much. I live at 517 Monroe Road in Marion Station, and I am very vocal about my concern that the grandchildren will have a planet that is not livable, honestly. I understand that many of the commissioners are also concerned about the same, and are in favor of banning the antiquated gas blower, gas blowers that landscapers are using, and I thank you for that. For anyone who is not, as the others have explained, there is a lot to know, frankly. Until you start looking into it, you don't understand the detriment. But given that they are unregulated, as Michael Willis pointed out, and Phil has pointed out, they are contributing great, greatly to the carbon emissions, and we frankly cannot look the other way when it comes to carbon emissions anymore, because climate change, which really results in volatile weather, is here in Lower Marion. It's not just for the West or the Southwest. It is now impacting us to the extent that, to the, to the point that our temperatures in Philadelphia are what Atlanta's temperatures were 20 years ago. I'm sure you read that news today. And I moved to the Northwest, I lived in the Northwest for a reason. I liked, I liked the Four Seasons. I liked cooler weather. I also consider myself very fortunate to live in Lower Marion Township. But I have to tell you that we have a significant responsibility, all of us, to make Lower Marion Township a highly desirable place to live, not just a place to pay for, but a place to live. And I am currently looking for communities where dark nights are important, and peace of mind is important, and environmentally friendly and forward-thinking decision-makers are at the helm. So I think that Lower Marion, being interested in this is very important. Lots of communities have already taken the plunge. And when I personally stopped raking my leaves like a crazy woman, I noticed birds barging through the leaves in the garden beds year-round. So, blowers, the noise is really bad. Everybody says the noise is not the biggest problem. Frankly, on my 7,000-square-foot property, it really is. So during COVID, this became really, really obvious. When my kids were all home, my dog goes crazy when the blowers start up behind me or next door. And my, my oldest son, who can't take the noise, goes berserk, can't focus on class, starts yelling at the dog. I get upset with him. It's completely dysfunctional. So the noise does matter, in addition to the detriment to our environment. And here's the good news. The good news is, there are lots of stories out there about landscapers who have been successful with the equipment that I use at home, frankly, my EcoPro electric lawn mower, and my electric mini blower, which I only use to get the grass clippings out of my way. But frankly, to Isabel's point, if you invite anybody to 517 Monroe Road, there's little grass left. It is a pollinator haven, and it is a complete joy to watch the hummingbirds every day and the butterflies. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. McMurtry. Anybody else? Jody, there we have. All right. And last call for those who are here for public privilege. Seeing none, I'll then turn to my colleagues on the board if they wish to respond. We've had a number of people on leaf blowers. My recollection is that this was once brought to our attention by Commissioner Sinai, so I'll give you first dibs.
Thank you, President Bernheim. And thanks to the main residents who spoke tonight about leaf blowers and gas-powered lawn equipment. I was just realizing that it's like this corner of the, of the dais, Commissioner O'Neill and Commissioner Courtney and myself, who kind of really got this going last year and brought it to the, the attention to the EAC. This has been an issue, not just post-COVID, but pre-COVID. It's something that certainly I hear from my constituents all the time. And we heard plenty tonight about the, about the noise issues and the climate impact, and, and all those things that go along with it. And as Isabel Melvin mentioned, you know, this, the EAC did have a, a initial meeting about this last year. And, you know, one thing I learned from that meeting, in addition to just doubling down on how important an issue I think this is, and something that Lower Marion should be the leader in, is that it's not a straightforward issue. It's not just a matter of substituting electric, you know, battery-powered blowers for gas blowers, because just blowing things puts particulates in the air, right? So it's not a matter of just banning outright, because then you have people who have existing equipment that you need a way to sort of phase them out and transition them. And, you know, there's a big education component that came out of that meeting that turned out to be very important in educating people on what the right policy is. But there are certainly plenty of communities that have done this already. They've done it not just in California, but in places that actually have leaves in the Northeast US, right? And they do things, they're kind of these blended approaches, where most of the time you can't use a leaf blower. It's in like, in leaf dumping season, you get kind of like an exemption period. There are lots of things we can consider, and the right thing to do is either go with the EAC to develop an ordinance, or our newly hired sustainability manager, to help us have an ordinance to bring to this board to adopt. But I think it's super important that we, we continue to push this forward, which certainly the people to my left and my right are, are pushing really hard on, to, to get this in front of the board and pass it. Because this is an area where I think if Lower Marion is a leader, then these issues of, well, landscapers don't want to do it, well, if they want the business of people who live in Lower Marion, it will accelerate their adoption of this technology. And I will be honest, I wasn't completely comfortable advocating for this until I actually put my money where my mouth is, and actually, you know, walk the walk, as opposed to just cheap talk up here. And so my colleagues are sick of me, you know, saying this, but, you know, I went to 100% electric or battery-operated lawn equipment. Not really a leaf blower, because you can just mow your leaves and then take those mulch leaves and put them in your beds and use them as compost or mulch or whatever. It's the right thing to do with it, or just mow them into your lawn. But, you know, I have a half, half acre of lawn. It's about an hour and a quarter to mow. And I can do it literally on the exact same equipment that took the gas engine off and the manufacturer, you know, you know, a full-blown regular gas motor, except now it has a battery-operated motor on it. And I can do my entire lawn in one battery. Right? The technology is here, right? I think three years ago, I would not have said the technology is here. The technology is here, right? So like, we should get on the ball and be leaders in this. And I'm thrilled that so many people in, in our community are pushing hard for this as well. Thank you, President Bernheim.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Court?
Thank you, President Bernheim. I won't repeat everything that the commissioner to my left has said, because he said it better than I would. I just wanted to draw some more attention to some of the resources that were discussed this evening, for what to do about improving your lawn to reduce the maintenance issues. Climate Action Lower Marion is a great grassroots group that I would encourage anyone who's concerned about climate change to join, and refer to their website. And the Lower Marion Conservancy has a program where they will look at your property and make recommendations about how you could put a pollinator garden in, and something that's better for your property than just grass. And they've also done some analysis, and I believe are on the side of getting rid of electric lawn, or getting rid of gas-powered lawn equipment. And then, because Commissioner Manos brought it up, and so did Dan Mercer, I wanted to return to a topic that I think we, we discussed over email a couple of years ago. And it's great to see that we have a YouTube channel now. And one of the great benefits of doing meetings on Zoom is how accessible they are to everyone. And it's unfortunate that our committees have, haven't been able to keep doing meetings on Zoom, because planning commission meetings on Zoom sort of replaces the need to televise them. We have a website that has all of our videos on it, LMTV. The cost for it is pretty minimal, but compared to YouTube, which is free, it's sort of, I think we need to reevaluate our technology. If we're going to continue using Zoom, which I think we should, it's literally two clicks to put it on YouTube at the same time. So that's my, my rant there. And I think it's great that we can get some grants for the skate park, because I think the skate park's a great idea. Thanks.
There it is. Commissioner Kramer?
I also want to thank our residents who have spoken about the gas-powered leaf blowers. This issue was discussed at an EAC meeting back in 2019, that I, if I recall correctly. And that was partly after I had received complaints before I became a commissioner about this issue from residents. I have received many complaints from residents about this since I've been a commissioner. One of the things that I have recently suggested to the township was that, as a first step, maybe we could consider limiting the number of gas-powered leaf blowers in use on any given property at any given time. And that this might be a way of beginning to phase them out, because we do need to phase them out. And I hope that the EAC and our new sustainability director, our sustainability manager, will tackle this issue in the very near future.
Thank you. I think Commissioner O'Neill?
Oh, thank you, President Bernheim. Yes, I'm very pleased to be a part of the smaller group that's going to be dealing with really diving in deep on the gas-powered landscape equipment. And the one thing that a couple of folks spoke about this evening, I believe it was, it could have been either Shawna McMurtry or Ms. Melvin, is the importance of incentivizing owners of landscaping companies, because that's really the balance that Commissioner Sinai mentioned, is that we have to be forward-thinking. We expect to be forward-thinking, but because we do have, we do need to support our businesses as well. And I think that this goes in terms of restriction versus ban, and how we lay this out over X number of years is really what we're looking at. And we're, we're so thrilled to be engaged in this. I, for one, am looking forward to working with everybody who spoke and others in the coming months, and I'm happy to, to answer any questions offline, and look forward to continuing the conversations. Also, I think it was Ms. McMurtry who uses her own equipment with her landscaper. I think that's excellent. And I think the more people and businesses, business owners here who want to do work here realize that that's what their demand is, then they'll respond to that demand. So happy to be a part of the discussion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Zell?
Thanks, President Bernheim. And as I mentioned last week, it's great that we are back in the public boardroom with public comment. I think that talking about the noise and the impact on quality of life from landscaping equipment, the time is now. And it, it may have been with the EAC a couple of years ago. It didn't make it here, but it is, it's, it's been, we've heard it from But it is, it's been, we've heard it from many different places recently particularly, not only tonight, but the people who live in our ward who contact us. And it is quality of life. And the issue, as Commissioner Sinai laid out very clearly, is transition. It's phased out. Because it's not only businesses, it's homeowners who have their own lawn mowers and their own blowers and mowers. And so we've got to figure that out. There are ways to do it. We have a new sustainability manager. Her name is Paloma Villa, and she is in the room with us tonight. Maybe you want to raise your hand. And so I think she may have gotten her first assignment, although that really comes from our manager. But there was one other comment, but I can't read my notes all that well. But, oh, I know, one other comment. So we have a sustainability plan coming our way, and we've been talking about this for many, many months. I think this issue of noise from landscaping equipment should be a very high priority for the EAC, which is advisory, for the staff, which has just been beefed up in this area, and for the commissioners to get to a plan and get to a solution. We can't do everything right away, but this is something that should be at the top of our priority list. And then one other comment from another speaker tonight. Any trees that are looked dead or have branches that look dead are inspected by the township arborist. So, and his name is Joe Marco, and he has a staff, and he makes a decision. And so my experience is that he's very responsive. And if there are cases where he's not, then we would bring that to the attention of our manager. But that's the process and how it works. So what may look dead may not be in his opinion, but he's an arborist. So that's how we do things. Thank you, President Bernheim.
Thank you, Commissioner Zellout. Commissioner Grimes?
Yeah, thank you. So I also appreciate the comments tonight about the leaf blowers, and I agree with the concerns, and I agree with and will not repeat what my colleague said. I will put another wrinkle on it. I have particular concern that we find alternatives that work for commercial landscapers. My part of the township I represent tends to have larger properties, in a lot of cases, several acres. And I would look forward to coming up with a solution that works. You know, battery power is great. The question is, and I don't know the answer, is that viable for properties that are several acres in size? And I think we need to know the answer to that. I think education is important. And on that topic, let me just say, because I get the frustration that people have with lawn mowers, with leaf blowers, sometimes if you go talk to your neighbors and let them know that you have concerns about the noise and frankly, the pollution, they may ask their landscapers to do something different. And I would say on that point, I get lots of texts early in the morning about people doing work, landscapers doing work before 8:00 AM, which is unlawful in this township. What I do, and yeah, granted, I'm commissioner, but I go talk to the landscaper or I talk to the neighbor, and 80% of the time, that ends, just like that, just from talking to them. The other thing is, if you're bothered by noise before 8:00 AM, call 911, and the police will respond to it. Don't call the police non-emergency number. Don't do the LM reported app, which is a great tool, but it isn't monitored all the time. Call the police. They will respond because that is already unlawful before 8:00 AM or 9:00 AM on the weekends and should not be happening. So with that said, I'm happy to participate in this discussion. Thank you all for raising it, and thank you, President Bernheim.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to respond to public privilege? Seeing none, the only point I want to make is that from the technological standpoint of trying to see what we can do to increase participation through some of the commissions, we are working on that. I wish it were easy as click-click, but we've had some problems, especially with utilizing, if everybody's got laptops here, you know, plugging into the township. But we are working to increase what we can get for participation. And consistent with that, it's great to be able to have had people come here today to speak about a topic or topics that were their concerns. It gets to the board. We get to hear it live. We get to respond to it and then, you know, put it, you know, into our to-do list. So the process actually does work. And that brings us then to the next section of our meeting, which is for public comment. And this is the opportunity to address the board on those items which actually are on our agenda. Let me note that there are certain consent items and ordinances that are out there if you wish to speak to those regarding vehicles and traffic. Now would also be the time to go ahead and do that. And I don't know if there's anybody who would like to take the opportunity for public comment. Again, this is for agenda items. And although we were extremely liberal with that three-minute rule, we're going to try to stick to it this time. Commissioner Manos, I see your hand. Please, come forth.
Tell George Manos, still live in Ballackinwood.
George, can you speak more into the microphone? It's a little difficult to hear.
Can you hear me now? Okay. My comment has to do with something that's on the consent calendar. It has to do with East Levering Mill Road. And I just wanted to express thanks to all the people who participated in getting that onto the capital improvement plan. That is the finance committee, you all who approved the budget, the capital improvement plan that as it was presented. All the people did all the hard work working with the township, the folks that live on Levering Mill Road, the Ballack walks people. All these folks really, their effort and their energy made it possible to bring the project forward and really thank Public Works for keeping it on their radar screen. And we understand that the next thing that's going to happen would be the intersection improvements at Belmont Avenue and East Levering Mill Road. After that is going to come the curb realignment, if necessary, for East Levering Mill Road itself. And what I was hoping is that Public Works would be coming forward with the plan that they would show to the neighborhood to show what it is that they intend to do. So I'm asking for Public Works to, if they have information about how they plan to proceed after they do the intersection so that the neighbors can know what's going on. And thank you all.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board during time of public comment? Do you have anybody online?
Scott France.
Okay. Scott, if you can unmute yourself, introduce yourself. Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Scott France. I live in Lynnwood on Harroper Grove. I also serve as co-chair on the township's planning commission. It's great to see all of you commissioners. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight. I'll try to be as quick as possible here. Tonight, I'm here to make a few requests regarding the fencing ordinance amendments that's coming up later to the Dunning Code. And while I'm not here at the direction of the planning commission, I am speaking on behalf of the decisions that were made by that board. And we debated these issues. We researched conditions on the tenant and township, guided staff who has their time, and returned to each specific provision in that ordinance, often more than once over the course of five humps and many, many hours. I can with all confidence say, it's the most time we've spent in meetings with the planning commission on any one single issue in my time there. I'm not sure if I'm proud of that fact, but I will say that that's fact. And so I heard the discussion on June 9th where many amendments were made to that proposal by the building and planning committee. There's a lot of discussions, mostly focused around materials, aesthetics, and equity issues. A lot of thoughtful comments were made, and I won't rebut or return to any of them. I think they spoke themselves and reflected a lot of the discussion that we had as well as planning mission levels. What I do want to focus in on are three specific changes to the ordinance that were included in the next. And I'm not sure that the results of these changes are going to achieve something that all of this board actually really wants, despite the votes that did take place on June 9th. I feel some of the outstanding issues are the larger issues, maybe overclouded or oversold some of these very specific points. The first is allowing four-foot solid fences in the frontage area, which moves the entire front yard from building to right of way. This scale and design is more reflective of a wall, and many of them are light walls. I ask you to consider what benefits this offers as opposed to a three-foot fence at this much smaller scale with pedestrians. The original proposal did allow for a four-foot fence if it was an open fence with 40% openness, in other words, a flat event, a typical pocketed fence. A three-foot fence is effective for most dogs and all small children. If a dog can jump three feet, then it can't sit between the slats of a 40% open fence, which could be four feet. So I think that addresses that problem. These numbers make sense, and they were proposed with very careful reasoning and much deliberation. I ask you to look at your own home and both of your neighbors. What if they were to put four-foot stockade or vinyl solid fences up alongside the front yard of your home and along the sidewalk you walk on each day? And ask you if that's an unnecessary impact on your property value and quality of life? And what did it achieve overall? My second point is regarding the removal of section S3B from the non-conforming site improvement section. It has read in still recent now that the current amendment before you would remove it. It reads, "When a non-conforming fence is damaged, destroyed, or removed for any reason, no more than 25% of the fence may be replaced in the same non-conforming fashion." With this removal, you are allowing any non-conforming fence to stay non-conforming to perpetuity, even if it is completely removed for any reason. Why would we do that? The 25% clause provides flexibility for uncontrollable actions and keeps unexpected costs from expelling. But it also seeks to see inappropriate fencing returned to the township's standards that all of the residents must abide. It's an issue of fairness. And finally, a specific amendment was made to dismiss any standards on secondary frontages that abut a primary roadway greater than 40 feet. This gets a little technical, but the most obvious correlation here is to a stretch of Lancaster Avenue between St. Charles Seminary and Lynnwood Shopping Center, which was the focus of many evenings at the planning commission. As promoted tonight, the six-foot fence is endorsed without any consideration of setbacks from the roadway. Landscaping might alleviate the visual aspect or even the right-of-way itself. Yes, there are existing conditions and homeowners display here. The planning commission recommendations, I believe, are a sympathetic and flexible approach to their situation while still offering the chance to improve its lighted insurance to our township over time. These amendments throw those provisions out and leave something that offers nothing to the entirety of the Lower Merion community. And I know you're all familiar with this area. I don't see how you can drive down and go and look at it and say, this is something that we should tolerate for being accessible to in Lower Merion. Fifty-three issues would bring this ordinance back to an effective and supportive level for all residents of the township while protecting property owners' rights and not just their property, but to the neighborhood and block quality that they walk into. I realize that even though these changes could be simplified by just reverting to the pre-June 9 language on these three counts, it would still likely result in another 30-day delay to enact. If you absolutely must enact this ordinance tonight, then I ask you to at least consider the spectable of non-conforming fences over 25% becoming conforming upon replacement. That provision already exists in the code, and I believe you can keep it enacted by specifying there are no further changes to that section if tonight's word is adopted. I will send you an email right now which has each of these three points and specific change that has taken place. Despite my verbiage here, they're very simple. Email itself takes, you know, they essentially three sentences to cover it all. So if you're curious and want to look at it, hopefully, along with you, my degree, is consider proposing that as an amendment during the next discussion. And we look forward to following along. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. France. Do we have anybody else online to?
Ms. McMurtry?
Okay. Ms. McMurtry, you are on mute.
Sorry. Okay. In Harrofer Township, they do an excellent job of communicating with residents, and several people brought this up in regards to the ban blowers. There's a man named Jesse Hart, who is a coordinator.
Ms. McMurtry, I apologize for seeing to interrupt you, but this is for items which are on our agenda this evening.
So sorry.
I think, no, that's all right. I think I know where you're going anyway, and it's an issue that we're aware of. But, you know, we do need to move on. So if there's something you would like to send us anyway, please don't hesitate to do that. But at 8:35, we have a number of other items to take care of tonight, all right?
My apologies, but thanks.
No apologies necessary, and thank you for understanding. All right. Do we have anybody else who wishes to address items which are on our agenda? Anyone else? All right. Is there anybody who would like to respond to the public comment? Commissioner Sinai?
Thank you, President Bernheim. I just need to respond briefly to Mr. Scott France. And I just want to say to start that the planning commission worked very, very hard on the fencing ordinance and for a very long time. And, you know, there's clearly a lot of differences in views on this throughout the township. And he was also party to a lengthy email exchange over the weekend, which I have more information on because I've since communicated with the township's solicitor. So I think there are a couple of things in response. And just first, I'm going to preface it by saying this is coming up later. I'm going to be in favor of moving ahead with this ordinance tonight, you know, coming back with other amendments later as need be. But better to have, you know, the fixes that are in this ordinance in place rather than to delay them anymore. But there are really two items. One is the non-conforming site improvement. So this gets a little in the weeds, but basically, the way that that ordinance was edited, a fence that's non-conforming, our solicitor suggests that if it is, you know, replaced in part, then it has to become conforming. So I think it's opposite of the interpretation that Mr. France alluded to. However, that does not apply to fences in the right-of-way, and that is a level of detail I'm not going to get into tonight. But it is an area of this that I think was not apparent when we worked on this and, you know, in future revisions should be cleaned up. The second thing he mentioned is the standards on the secondary fence. I appreciate that. My colleagues appreciate it even more. If I go long enough, we're going to start talking about lawn mowers again. So I'm very sympathetic to Scott France's and the planning commission's views on the secondary frontage fences that are really visible from heavily trafficked streets. I think we need a different fix for that than what was in the previous code. And we need to find a different approach that recognizes that these fences largely in the right-of-way, perhaps, and is something that the township should address as a separate, you know, matter of maintenance. Anyway, but thank you for your time and for your comments.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Sinai. Anybody else who would like to briefly respond to public comment? All right. Seeing none, then that brings us to the next section of our meeting, which is to address our consent calendar. There's been a request by Commissioner Grimes to remove item number I, the preliminary land development plan known as the Piazza Project, from the consent calendar, and we'll address his issues after that. Does anybody wish to remove any other items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I will then move for the adoption of the consent calendar as listed within our agenda with the removal of item I. I believe we need a roll call for that. Is that correct? So if you'd be so kind. And we need a second of that first. Thank you, Commissioner Whalen.
For the adoption of the consent calendar as amended, Mr. Churchill?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Gaddam?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. McComb?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Aye.
Mr. Sinai?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Zellout?
Aye.
Mr. Bernheim?
Aye.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
As amended.
As amended.
So that then will bring us to the one item which has been removed from the consent calendar, and that is in reference to the preliminary plan development for 104, 108, 114, 120, 124, 130, 150, and 198 West Lancaster Avenue in Ardmore. Commissioner Grimes, is there something you wish to bring to our attention?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion for a small amendment to one of the conditions. The board will hopefully recall, last week, we had a discussion about a new portion of-
Um, yes, I'm going to make a motion for a small amendment to one of the conditions. Um, the board will hopefully recall, last week we had a discussion about a new portion of, of condition number 57, um, which dealt with the applicant working with township staff to create, uh, develop a, a safe pedestrian route around the project. Subsequent to the meeting, uh, the township manager and I had a conversation because staff asked to amend that language slightly, and we agreed that, um, this had to be done, this amendment had to be done publicly, formally. So I will read, I'll make a motion, and, um, and then certainly if anyone has any questions, I can take it. Um, I would move to amend condition of approval number 57 to strike the last sentence, uh, which begins, "The applicant will work with township staff," and to create a new condition of approval, reading, "The applicant will work with township staff to develop and implement safe pedestrian routes around the project during construction."
So just to point a clarity, so it's condition 57 would be the same except for the last sentence would be as you...
Yes, delete the last sentence. And then we create a new condition that, I could read it again if people would like me to. It's very similar, but, um...
Why don't you do that so we can do this all as a one motion to amend, and then we can vote on the preliminary plan as amended, assuming it passes?
Sure. Yes, again, the new, uh, condition would read, "The applicant will work with township staff to develop and implement safe pedestrian routes around the project during construction."
So you're making that as a motion for amendment as a new condition?
I am, yes.
That's seconded by Commissioner Zellout. Is there any discussion on, on that? Seen none, all favor then, in favor of the amendment is moved by Commissioner Grimes, raise your hand indicating aye. Any opposed? Seen none. Uh, the preliminary plan then is, is so amended, and at that point, are there any other amendments or changes you have, Commissioner Grimes or anyone else? All right, seen none, then I'll call the vote for the preliminary plan as just amended. Yeah, so a move for that first, and seconded by Commissioner Grimes. Therefore, any other discussion? Seen none, then all those in favor, please raise your hand indicating aye. Right? Any opposed? Seen none, the preliminary plan therefore, um, has been duly adopted.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Grimes. That then brings us to the next section of our meeting where we have, um, several ordinances relating to vehicles and traffic safety. Uh, since we discussed these at length at the committee level, um, it appears that all of the commissioners are, are in favor of these ordinances, um, or the adoption of these as ordinances. So similar to the process that we do for, for consent calendar, since this requires a roll vote, and as opposed to having four separate roll votes, unless there's anybody that wishes to remove any of these, um, I will read them, uh, you know, all four of them, and then they will be four separate ordinances, but we will vote for them at one shot. So first, anybody wish to remove any of these ordinances? All right, seen none, then bear with me as I, I read through this. So the, the first is ordinance number 4217, which is an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Marion, chapter 145 thereof entitled Vehicles and Traffic. Article 15 schedules by imposing a stopping or standing prohibited restriction on the south side of Argyle Road from a point 135 feet west of Sussex Road for a distance of 70 feet towards Wynwood Road, and imposing a parking prohibited at all times restriction on the east side of Sussex Road from a point 55 feet north of Argyle Road to the corner. Next, ordinance 4218 is an ordinance to amend the code of township of Lower Marion, chapter 145, titled Vehicles and Traffic. Articles 15 schedules section 145 dash 108 and schedule eight stop intersections by rescinding the two-way stop regulation establishing a four-way stop regulation at Harrington Road and Mount Pleasant Road, by rescinding the two-way stop regulation at Rock Creek Road and Rock Creek and North Branch, and by establishing a two-way stop regulations at Harrington Road and Rock Creek Road and at Rock Creek Road and Mount Pleasant Road. You all got that? The next one is 4219, which is an ordinance to amend the code of Lower Marion Township, again, chapter 145, Vehicles and Traffic. Article 15 schedules 145, 108, schedule eight, stop intersections by establishing a three-way stop regulation on Rose Glen Road at its intersection with Maple Hill Road. And the last is an ordinance to amend the code of Lower Marion Township, again, chapter 145, Vehicles and Traffic. Article 15 schedules 145 dash 101, schedule one, uh, speed limits by imposing a 25 mile an hour speed limit on Willow Way from South Woodbine Avenue to Maple Avenue. Uh, each of these ordinances were authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners on June 16 and duly advertised in the July 11, 2021 edition of the Main Line Times. So I will move for the adoption of ordinances 4217, 4218, 4219, and 4220. Do we have a, a second for that? Thank you, Commissioner McComb. Is there any further discussion on, on any of these? Seen none, then I will ask our secretary to be kind enough to call the vote on all four of these ordinances.
For the adoption of ordinances number 4217, 4218, 4219, and 4220, Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zellout.
Aye.
Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
The ordinances are duly adopted.
Thank you very much. That then brings us to the next item of business, which for those who are following, it's on page 33 of the, of our materials. And while this is the continuation of a public hearing, I'm going to note at the outset, there is going to be a motion to continue this, uh, until September 29, but we need to officially read this. It's an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Marion, chapter A18 Historic Resource Inventory, to add 533 Mason Place to the Historic Resource Inventory as a Class II resource. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on April 21 and duly advertised in the May 30 and June 6, 2021 editions of the Main Line Times in suburban. Uh, this public hearing was continued at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on June 16, 2021. So I would open this public hearing and note that it is being continued again at the request of the, the property owner, and I will make the motion to continue, uh, the hearing to September 29, 2021, Board of Commissioners meeting. We have a second on that. Thank you, Commissioner Zellout.
And Commissioner, President Bernheim, there are serious issues with this proposal, and that's one of the reasons that, for the continuation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding that? Um, therefore, don't know if we need a roll vote for this. I believe we can just do it by, um, indicating, those who are in favor, raise your hand indicating your approval. Any opposition? Seen none, it then carries. The next item is also going to end up being continued, but once again, for the record, we'll read into, read it. Uh, this is in reference to 39 Fairview Road, and it's an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Marion, chapter A18 Historic Resource Inventory, to add 39 Fairview Road to the Historic Resource Inventory as a Class II resource. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners held February 24 and duly advertised in the July 4 and July 11, 2021 editions of the Main Line Times in suburban. I will officially open the public hearing and note again, at the request of the property owner, uh, this is going to be continued, and I will move to continue this hearing to the September 29, 2021 Board of Commissioner meeting. Do we have a, a second for that? Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. And, and again, just to note, there's some questions about this that the property owner had, which hopefully will be, uh, addressed before September 29. Any further discussion on this? Seen none, again, if you'd be so kind, just raise your hand indicating your approval or aye. Thank you. Any opposition? Seen none, this then, uh, matter has been continued to September 29. Next, that brings us to a public hearing, um, and this is for an ordinance to amend the code of township of Lower Marion, chapter 155 entitled Zoning, Article II, Definitions, Section 155 dash 2.1, definition of terms by adding definitions for open fence, secondary frontage, and secondary frontage lot, and amend Article III, uh, general to districts, section 155 dash 3.7, fences and walls by adding secondary frontage fencing standards, revising permitted fencing materials, amending table 3.7.1, fence heights, tables 3.7.2, fence type by district, table 3.7.3, fencing terminology, and by adding a new table 3.7.2A, fence and wall regulations by type and location, and to amend Article 11, Process and Procedures, section 155 dash 11.1.1E, zoning permits and preliminary opinions by requiring a zoning permit for secondary frontage fencing. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on June 16 and duly advertised in the July 4 and July 11, 2021 editions of the Main Line Times in suburban. And as we heard earlier, it has been discussed at length by many. So I will officially open the public hearing and ask our Director of Building and Planning, Mr. Lessling, to provide an explanation.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. Um, as was mentioned earlier in, uh, during public comment, this is an ordinance that has been, um, being considered since late last year. It's been discussed at length publicly at the Planning Commission and then the Building and Planning Committee. Um, there are four sections to what are, um, being discussed this evening and considered in this ordinance, and this is really a complete revision to the fencing standards that are contained within the new zoning code. When the new zoning code was being adopted, um, the consultant added, um, some stronger language concerning fencing. And at that time, we, both Bob Duncan and myself noted that the, the provisions for fencing, um, could delay the adoption of the overall zoning code because they're so, um, so broadly applicable. Fencing is something that relates to almost every property in the township. Every, everybody has a potential with a residential property to have, um, fencing. So it effect, it has a broad application. Um, we knew that when the code was adopted that we would have to go back and review that, and we've been, as a community, we've been spending that time. So with this new fencing ordinance, there's been a lot of new charts added, it's tried to, the whole purpose of it is to be fair, and it also is supposed to be clear. There's a number of new charts that help to, to read it, that it's very, um, easy to read going through it. These amendments update the definitions, in particular, adding a definition for secondary frontage. This is a type of, um, roadway organization that we have in the township that hadn't been anticipated by the consultant when we adopted the new zoning code. Uh, it essentially deals with properties that have frontage on two roads, not a corner property, but where you almost have a backyard and a front yard, where to most people, they consider that their backyard, but it's really a frontage. And our new code, um, places great, um, emphasis on the appearance of frontages. In order to regulate that and not treat that as a primary frontage, we needed to create a new definition for secondary frontage. That is one of the major elements of this new ordinance. Also, the new ordinance, um, amendments address the height, the location, and the materials of fencing. Um, it also addresses completely the non-conformities of fencing, and then also is very specific about, um, which sections of, um, fencing require zoning permits. Um, I'm happy to answer any of the questions. I know the Commissioners are very, um, very familiar with this ordinance. We've been through it. I, I think it's probably better with, just leave it at that summary and be able to answer anything on a point-by-point basis.
I, I would agree with that process. Thank you. Is there anybody who has any questions? Yeah, Commissioner McComb.
Uh, thank you, President Bernheim. Chris, thank you. Um, I just want, I'm trying to refresh my recollection as to what Mr. France raised in his comments about the change from three feet to four feet in the, in the primary frontage. As I recall, it was three feet, and then I believe Commissioner Kramer and President Bernheim raised the lack of functionality of a three-foot limit. Was there any other discussion that anybody, that, that you recall by the board on that day? It was purely function, I believe, uh, Commissioner Kramer referenced, like, I think we were talking about dogs and small children. So it was sort of a functional test, but was there any other discussion that you recalled about that subject?
Not by the board, no. There was, it was discussed at length by the Planning Commission, but not at the Building and Planning Committee.
Okay. So it sounds like we're tying it, it's sort of a conflict between aesthetics and functionality.
Correct. I think to Mr. Francis's point, the Planning Commission discussed at length the impact of a solid fence, essentially creating a wall around the outside of the, um, of, of a property, where the Planning Commission, um, looked at this as, if the idea is to enclose a property for purposes of keeping a pet inside or a small child, they felt that the provisions of a four-foot open fence would achieve that, and would also achieve that classic look of the township that, that provides an, an open look to the front yard and to the houses. Lower Marion is designed as a particular type of suburb, you know, coming out of the estate era, that you had a house that was set off on long area of, of lawn. It's one of the reasons why we have so many lawn leaf flowers and lawn mowers. That was, that was an aesthetic design decision for houses in Lower Marion Township. Enclosing that area was always, um, traditionally done through open fencing, not through, not through closed fencing. It's only in the last few years that we've seen that. And the Planning Commission felt that the impact of creating a wall between the public realm and the private realm, um, had negative connotations, and that if the purpose of fencing was to enclose it for safety for children and dogs, that that could easily be achieved by a four-foot open fence, but a three-foot solid fence was an appropriate height.
Thank you.
Commissioner Zellout.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Chris, help, help me better understand this. Scott France made the distinction between open and closed, and, but all we did on June 9th was go from three to four. So where does it say in here that three would be closed and four could be, four would have to be open?
It does, now the, now the way the code is written, both the height of, of a fence and a front yard setback or front yard, or front yard frontage is four feet, whether it is open or closed. They're both treated the same.
Yeah, but all we did was change three to four. Where does, we didn't change open versus closed. So where's the language in here that refers to open and closed?
It's, I believe in table... It's, uh, table 372A, which is... And we'll see that in that table, along the left side, there are, um, there are a series of, um, it's a column that lists the open fence, um, so, and then it has masonry wall, a state fence, um, a state fence with a masonry base, and solid wood fence. And then that, that includes that the solid wood fence shall not exceed four feet in height, the Planning Commission had recommended, shall not exceed three feet in height. You're not seeing the track change, you're seeing the recommended, you're seeing the recommended ordinance language. By the Building and Planning Committee.
I, I agree with the distinction made by, uh, the Planning Commission and, and pointed out to us by Scott France. Um, second question then is, um, is third point on secondary frontage on streets greater than 40 feet?
So where, where is it that we took, you know, what, what amendment did we make in, on June 9th to remove that recommendation? To be honest, I didn't think there was a change in there. I think this is what came forward from the Planning Commission.
Very good, okay, thank you.
I'm not replying to that change made by the Building and Planning Committee.
Anything?
Hi, those are my two questions.
Before I, anybody else, just to note, in reference to three to four feet, I think one of the driving factors behind that, where there were a number of people with four-foot fences that had raised some type of objection to it, indicating it was accomplishing their purpose. I don't recall any discussion about open or closed fencing at, at that time, one, one way or the other. It was more the effectiveness of the height than, than the, the other element of it.
Yeah, Commissioner Sinai.
Uh, yeah, I think just to address that point, President Bernheim. Uh, my recollection of the discussion was that, you know, the, uh, discussion then was, as Chris presented tonight, is either a four-foot closed fence, or, we have a three-foot closed fence, or a four-foot open fence. And I don't think, you know, at the, at the discussion with the Building and Planning, that we contemplated a four-foot fence that started closed and was open. And I, I have trouble telling in the code if that's even a permitted blended option. Having said that, you know, we have a lot of very positive revisions in this ordinance that would be nice to be passed. And, you know, if we want to come back and make that tweak at a later date, that strikes me as a later date kind of thing.
Thank you. I'll go to Concur. Anybody else with any other questions or comments? Commissioner Zoff?
Now you've added comments. So I agree with Commissioner Sinai. So will the planning staff be able to bring back a draft amendment that addresses the issue of a, the, the front yard fence height, open versus closed? Because we didn't talk about it, open versus closed, on June 9th. You know, when I supported a four-foot fence height, but you made a, he makes the distinction between open versus closed. Stockade versus a, a state. That's a, you know, they're, they're functionally different fences, and they are aesthetically different fences. And so is that something you can bring back in the fall of 2021?
Staff has been compiling, yes, it is. Staff is compiling another round of minor cleanups, which we always think that, so they'll be, we're doing these quarterly. We will put that on the list. And I'm sure the Planning Commission would be happy to discuss fencing again.
And I thank the co-chair of the Planning Commission for his comments tonight. Thank you.
One is a, a point of order before getting to actually Commissioner Combs should have provided the opportunity for public comment. I don't know if we have anybody seen John Q. Public, AKA Commissioner Manos, please.
Thanks, President Bernheim, for the opportunity to speak to you again. I just wanted to pick up a little bit on what Scott Francis' comments were, and reflect a little bit on some of the things that some of us feel are defining features of the township. And as the township moves forward, and as the township sort of evolves, certain things are coming clear, that certain things that were defining features of the township are slowly changing their character.
Mr. Manos, could I ask you to speak up a little bit louder or get closer to the mic?
Of course, Commissioner Zoff. Can you hear me now?
Much better. Thank you.
Won't repeat what I just said. Now, those of us who have been living here a long time have a certain picture of what the township was when we moved in. And I'm completely sympathetic with the folks that have been here, living here 40, 50 years, that would love it if the township had never changed. You know, where you could go out and play stickball in the street between time you got out of school and time you ate dinner, and you would maybe have to move out of the way of one car, 40, 50 years ago. Those things have changed. But when we look at the township and what defines it, the aesthetics of it and the appearance of it is a big part of it. And one of the wonderful things that defines the township is how open it is, and how you can see into the properties, how the space that's in the properties, the beautiful trees, the beautiful landscaping, the beautiful buildings, really become part of the streetscape. So when you think about what Scott Francis is talking about, what Commissioner Sinai is talking about, what you're talking about is a gradual sort of evolution of what defines the township. And in commercial areas, people are concerned about tall buildings. Tall buildings do affect the way some, that block that the building is on looks, but two blocks away, you don't even know that building is there. So does the, how, to what extent does something like that define the township? When I get up in the morning, go out and get the paper, and see the kids on my block at the corner waiting for the bus, see the folks that are jogging on the street, walking the dog, seeing and enjoying the beauty of the properties that they, about the street that they're walking down, this to me is a defining feature. Now, if I was to come out at the door tomorrow morning and find four-foot-high solid fences on the houses that surround mine, to me, that would change the character of the township from an aesthetic point of view. So I'm, you know, you all have put so much work into this. It's really, I don't even know if it's appropriate to suggest that you reconsider some of the aspects of it. But as far as MDR is concerned, I can't imagine that if you have four-foot-high fences, that you wouldn't want them to be all completely open so that you could see into the property, because those properties are small, and the houses are fairly close to the street. And when it comes to the LDR divisions, the properties are a little bit larger, but still there. When you drive down Old Gulf Road, when you drive down a lot of the second or third tertiary roads, and look into those properties, that defines the township. So when it comes to maybe primary and secondary roads like Montgomery and Lancaster, Lancaster Avenue particularly, in, in Wynwood, where you have a lot of traffic, there you can see a solid four-foot-high fence, possibly six-foot-high fence, as I think the ordinance calls or permits. But off of a primary or off a secondary road, I don't see why you wouldn't require a completely open fence so you'd be able to preserve that sort of aspect of the township. So in a process of your deliberations, just ask you to consider adopting something that, let's say promotes that aspect of the township's features. There's a, you know, this goes along with the rear yard pickup. Days go by, you know, rear yard pickup was automatic. Now it's not. So, you know, if you think about the trash cans that lie in the street after the trash is collected, and the fences, you begin to understand, like, you know, things are gradually evolving in the township. And it's more important to how you manage that than try to prevent it. And I'm saying, I'm suggesting ways to manage it. Maybe I'll just let it go at that, but I ask you to consider that. And thanks for your attention.
Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Any other public comment? All right. So then we'll officially close the public hearing, and I will then move for the adoption of Ordinance 4221. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Commissioner Sinai. Now, any, any further board, board discussion on this? Yeah, Commissioner McCombs, please.
Yeah, thank you, President Bernheim. I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Manos. I think there's a world of difference between the backyard, a property fronting on Lancaster may have the need for a solid six-foot fence for various reasons, because they don't want to be looking into Lancaster, they don't want their children's kickball to be traveling over the fence. But one of the things about our township, and one of the things that's consistent with the comprehensive plan, our emphasis on walkability, is to encourage people to, to walk. And one of, we spent a ton of time on sort of activating streetscapes and, you know, the buildings, the businesses on Lancaster Avenue where you have to be able to see in. The idea of having a solid four-foot fence, it really, it's a dramatic change to the character of Lower Marion. It doesn't sound like Lower Marion, it doesn't sound like the Lower Marion that many of us have grown to love. And I think it's something we need to give serious consideration. And I truly understand the functionality argument, that you may need a four-foot fence. But there, you could have a semi-open fence that keeps your small puppy or small toddler safe and sound, that doesn't really destroy the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And I think it really becomes a sore thumb when you have a four-foot solid fence. I think that's something we, we need to look at, something that staff can bring forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Sinai?
Thank you, President Bernheim. Just briefly, I want to, I completely agree with what Commissioner McCombs said. And I just wanted to add something, because I know there are, there are some among us who view, you, the individual property owner's right to choose what kind of fence they put up unless there's a safety issue rather than a, a communal design issue. And let me just say that, that, you know, as, as the Chair of the Ad hoc Sidewalk Committee, it is not simply as, as Chris Lesswing said, oh, you know, we're putting up solid fences who, you know, have a separation between our, you know, people don't like the separation of the properties. It's a, a solid fence or a wall, which could go all the way up to the sidewalk, makes the sidewalk less walkable. Right? Because there is no space between the sidewalk and now what is a four-foot wall. Right? So I think there's actually an important walkability and public safety aspect to having open fences and not tall solid fences, that, that is not a individual property rights issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with any other further, you know, comment or, or discussion? Before we call the vote, I think that they're, they're valid points, and Commissioner Manos, thank you for, for bringing that to our attention. And it may be something that in those future tweaks that we, we want to address sooner as opposed to later. That being stated at this point, given all that's gone on, a lot of hard work for a lot of people, and hats off to the folks in the Planning Commission for the hours and hours that they have spent, it's appreciated. Would like to call the vote for Ordinance Number 4221, and we do need a roll call vote.
For the adoption of Ordinance 4221, Mr. Churchill?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Ms. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. McCombs?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Hi.
Mr. Sinai?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Zelloff?
Aye.
Mr. Bernheim?
Aye.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Very good. All right. That then brings us to the next item, yet another public hearing for adoption of an ordinance regarding minor home occupation amendments. For those following along, page 47 of our agenda. And this is an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Marion, Chapter 155, entitled Zoning, to amend Article 10, Supplemental Use Regulations and Nonconformities, by adding a minimum parking requirement to minor home occupations in Section 155-10.1.1B4. And to allow public and on-street parking within 500 feet of the property to count towards required minor home occupation parking in the MDR1 zoning district. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on June 16 and duly advertised in the July 4 and July 11 2021 additions of the Main Line Times and Suburban. Officially open the public hearing, and again calling our Director of Building and Planning, Mr. Lesswing, to provide us an explanation.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. This is a, a topic that had originally been bundled with a series of cleanups that coming next on the agenda. But this was separated out while we were doing the discussion. To, to add a provision addressing minor home occupations and off-street parking in the MDR district, that was a very good point that was raised by Commissioner Kramer, and somewhat taken on a life of its own, what we thought was an easy change. In the old zoning code, minor home occupations were required of two off-street parking spaces. The new zoning code, they have none. The zoning officer, based on observation of, of the new code and testing it out, we, we talked once a week or so, has adjusted that we add back in a provision requiring one off-street parking space for a minor home occupation. The reason for that is that a minor home occupation is intended to be a minor home occupation in a residential district. The idea would be that your neighbors would not know that you have a minor home occupation, that if you had an off-street parking space, your neighbors would assume that it's just a visitor to your house. And most of these minor home occupations are, are, say, a doctor, a psychiatrist, somebody coming for four visits, you know, up to four visits a day. And if somebody's getting out in your driveway and going to your house, it's not, not drawing attention to that use. It's still maintaining the primary function of the residential neighborhood as a residential neighborhood. So the idea of, of having a driveway, and the driveway could be used, and then the, requiring that one space in that driveway be provided for the minor home occupation made a lot of sense, because the vast majority of residential neighborhoods in the township are low density and have off-street parking. But there is a district that Commissioner Kramer correctly pointed out, the MDR1 district, which includes the denser areas of Bryn Mawr, Ardmore, Ballackinwood in particular, that have single-family homes on very small lots, or twin homes. Many of these areas don't have off-street parking. And as a matter of fairness, it was brought up, is it fair not to be able to have these homes be able to have a minor home occupation? Particularly if it could be done without having a burden upon their neighbors. Now, in those neighborhoods, on-street parking is the character, as in the LDR districts, where you have the larger lots, the character is off-street parking with driveways. But in the MDR districts, people routinely park on the street. So it wouldn't necessarily be out of character to have visitors to a minor home occupation park on the street. So the new provisions provide for in the MDR1 district, allowing that requirement for the one off-street parking space where on-street parking is available, or there's public parking within 500 feet from the home occupation. I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Just one thing, I will point out that when this was originally proposed to the Planning Commission, it didn't include the MDR provisions. And as it was amended at the BMP, it went back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission originally had proposed, had originally recommended approval with the one space. At their meeting last week, after discussing this, they, they didn't recommend approval, and they just recommended sticking with the ordinance as is and not requiring any off-street parking. Part of that discussion was the benefit of on-street parking, that on-street parking in residential districts provides traffic calming in some ways. I don't think that the planning, to be fair, as part of that discussion, it was at the end of a relatively long meeting, and I don't think the Planning Commission fairly considered the impact upon the lowest-density districts in the township. The old, you know, what's happening out in Gladwin, what's happening at the larger properties in Penn, in Penn Valley or Villanova, where there isn't on-street parking. Happy to answer any of your questions.
Okay. Just questions at this point, we'll have a chance for, for comments. Anybody has any, any questions, members of the board, for Mr. Lesswing? Yes, certainly Commissioner Courtney.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Could you repeat that last one? It sounded like you said that there is not on-street parking in lower-density residential areas.
In, in some areas, some of the areas of the western part of the township, that are a large lot, there isn't on-street parking. Some of those roads don't have on-street parking, so it would be impractical. And most of those larger lots, if you're getting into a lot over, over half acre in the township, it's having a driveway, and it has, it should have sufficient off-street parking, because that's, that's been baked into our zoning code since we first had a zoning code back in 1927. Key provisions.
Are there a significant number of minor home occupations in that part of the town?
I, I don't have home occupations mapped. We have, we keep track of the number of home occupations, and it's something, as we were doing this, I was anticipating that question, and I wanted to provide a map of all the home occupations. We don't have that database. I will promise you, we will have that done by the end of the year. I have them by number. We, we usually add about two dozen home occupations a year. We're estimating we have somewhere between around 300 home occupation, minor home occupations in the township.
Yeah. All right, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Anybody else with any, any other questions? Sinai, is there any members of the public who'd like to make comments? Commissioner Manos?
I promise this is the most, you'll see me tonight. Having to do with non-traffic home occupations versus minor home occupations, it's not so much the traffic or the parking issue that I think is a concern, it's the definition and what criteria establish whether it's a non-traffic home occupation or a minor home occupation. And I would challenge anybody to say what kind of home occupation you could have, defined as a non-traffic home occupation that wouldn't require some kind of delivery of some kind of material sometime during the year. The way the ordinance is written now, a non-traffic organ, a non-traffic home occupation cannot have any, zero commercial deliveries, commercial visits. A minor home occupation, on the other hand, can have up to four a day. Okay? Four commercial visits. So if you have a nontra, so-called non-traffic home occupation, your next-door neighbor can have a minor home occupation, you can't have any visits for any commercial visits at all, whereas your next-door neighbor can have up to four a day, 780 a year. whereas your next-door neighbor can have up to four a day, 780 a year. So that means that somebody that has a so-called non-traffic home occupation needs a case of print paper, they have to leave their house, get in the car, drive over to Staples, pick up a case, drive back, just in order to get, to be code compliant. So I'm suggesting that you eliminate a non-traffic, what's so-called non-traffic home occupation, and call that a minor home occupation. Allow some reasonable amount of visits, maybe one per day, five per week, 180 per year. Because I submit to you that somewhere there is a number between zero and 720 that it's reasonable to allow for a so-called non-traffic home occupation. I don't think there is any such thing. So I'm suggesting that you call the least impactful home occupation, a minor home occupation, and you call the one that can have up to four per day, visits per day, 780 per year, a home occupation. And allow folks who want to have a very low-impact home occupation have one that they can fit into and comply with the law. And I know that everybody in Lower Merion is honest, and nobody would consider having a non-impactful home occupation that they didn't tell anybody about but just had, because you could not tell the difference between a really low-impactful home occupation and a regular visit from your cousin, I think, under any circumstances. So to me, you might get higher compliance for registration if you had a more reasonable set of criteria that established actually what the impact of your home occupation was. So I'm just saying that I think that that needs to be looked at. Maybe you can't address it right here and right now, but when I went to get a home occupation, I knew I wasn't going to see any kind of traffic except maybe once or twice a year. And so I filed for a non-traffic home occupation. And fortunately, most of the time, if I wanted to meet with a client, I met them at their site. But sometimes clients would come to my house completely unexpected and unannounced. That's a commercial visit, so I was just violating the law, whereas I wasn't really having any impact on anything in the neighborhood, just for your consideration. So that's what I'm asking you to consider. That is to say, call a minor home occupation what it is, a minor home occupation, allow it to have a certain number of visits, a very small number of visits. Maintain your home occupation category as a higher standard, a more impactful standard. That way, I think you'll get better compliance, and I think you'll allow people that want to have a small occupation actually have one. So thank you for considering it. And thanks for your attention. Five times tonight, I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you for bringing us up, but you also happen to be technically correct. It's not before us this evening, and that what's before us is the parking requi... I said, you're technically correct, what you brought up is not before us this evening, what's before us is the parking requirement, but when we go to some of those future tweaks, we can look into that, and I promise no one will issue a citation for your confessed, you know, violation. So with that being said, is there any other public comment? Do we have anybody online? All right, so we can officially close the public hearing, and then what I'll do is I'm going to move for the adoption of the ordinance, and then we can have any further discussion by the board. So I will move for the adoption of ordinance 4222. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. And now, any board discussion before we vote? Commissioner Courtney.
Thank you, President Bernheim. I spoke against this in building and planning with regard to the possibility of adding more pavement to our township to account for parking spaces for minor home occupations. I still feel that way, but I also think that this is an ordinance we don't need. There, I see sort of two reasons why you would need to have a minor home occupation account for their own parking. The lower-density residential area where there isn't on-street parking, well, that's not going to be a problem. You have a giant property, you have a big driveway, your pavement's already there. The other end of the spectrum, the denser areas, MDR1, I have pulled up here our township zoning map on GIS, this thing is super useful, thank you. A lot of MDR1 in Ardmore, where on-street parking is becoming rarer and rarer, and I'm pretty sure all of these are within 500 feet of a public parking lot. So this ordinance is going to have zero impact on these things. I don't think it's worth doing, for the potential of an adverse impact of creating additional pavement in Lower Merion Township that we just don't need. Thanks.
Commissioner McComb.
Thank you, President Bernheim. I agree with Commissioner Courtney. I think this is a solution in search of an issue. I mean, it isn't an issue, and I'm not going to repeat verbatim what Commissioner Courtney said, we just, we don't need it, it creates something that's unnecessary. So I would not support it.
Commissioner Sinai.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Well, I beg to differ with my esteemed colleagues. We had a two-parting spot requirement in our code for decades that seemed to work really well. No one ever complained about it. For some reason, it got changed in the zoning code. Our zoning compliance, our zoning officer said, I think this is going to be a problem. And so it came percolated up from staff as an incipient problem that we should fix, reverting back to the code that never had a problem. I don't share the concern about increased pavement. If the issue is that we already have big driveways, and so it's going to have no impact, then there's going to be no pavement from the requirement anyway. I think what it does actually is addresses those cases where, you know, it's ostensibly four visits per day, no one really is out there keeping count, it's probably six to eight visits a day, it's, you know, a bunch of cars coming through, and lots of places in the township that might have these, the driveway just does not accommodate, you know, additional cars. There just wasn't enough driveway on the lot in the first place, and we shouldn't have minor home occupations in those locations, right? There should be criteria where they should go. We've heard a lot tonight from people speaking, as well as commissioners, about the importance of maintaining the elements of the fabric of Lower Merion. I think this is one of those things that matters in a large part of the township for, you know, however small you think it is, just keeping commercial activity or the impact of commercial activity out of residential neighborhoods. Certainly, the residents in Ward 12 view the residential neighborhoods as important to be residential and, you know, community-focused among the residents. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Sinai.
Thank you, President Bernheim. Mr. Sinai nailed it, in my view, and it wasn't theoretical. The zoning officer brought to his boss that this has occurred. There have been problems once we changed the code over a year ago, and the lack of a requirement for not two, but even one off-street parking space. It is about the fabric of the township, and it is an important issue at times. Many years ago, we spent many hours one evening on whether to approve a home occupation over the separation requirement, and the neighbors were, there's a lot of opposition to it. So if for where we do allow home occupation, we should require one parking space. Thank you.
Anybody else? I see no further comments than the time to call the vote for ordinance number 4222, and we will need a roll call for that.
For the adoption of ordinance 4222, Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
No.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Kramer.
No.
Mr. McComb.
No.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Nay.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Aye.
Eight to four.
Four.
You know a better math. Eight to four.
All right. We'll remember that at budget time. All right, that then brings us to our next public hearing, which is for the adoption of ordinance Chapter 155, the zoning, to amend definitions of predominant setback standards, heights in the LI Light Industrial and RHR, the Rock Hill Road districts, and gas station regulations, which is found on page 50 of our agenda. With your permission, I am not going to read the entire aspect of this, given that it's 9:30 at night, but this is an ordinance which was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners on May 19, and duly advertised in the July 4 and July 11, 2021 additions of the Main Line Times and Suburban. So we will officially open the public hearing, and once again acknowledge our Director of Building and Planning, Mr. Lesswing.
And I'll just do a brief summary of this. This is something that staff had brought forward, as I mentioned, every quarter, there's cleanups to new code that we're noticing that just need to be refined. We keep track of that and bring them forward every quarter. This was that group that we brought forward, and during the Building and Planning Committee, there was really no discussion of these. This was pretty much in agreement. We're looking at some definitions for accessory building, particularly to, for treehouses, adding treehouses as an accessory building. I think we've seen in the township, there's been cases where treehouses, since they're not regulated, accessory buildings can get very large. This gives us the ability to treat them as any other accessory structure. Addressing some clarifications with predominant setback, these standards were primarily meant for residential neighborhoods. They were inadvertently applied to the commercial, we're removing them from application to the commercial district. Amending just clarification to the height standards in the LI district, making sure that it's stories and height, we wanted to put that in there. Requiring a 200-foot separation between new gas dispensing pumps and residential uses. And then also clarifying the height in the Rock Hill Road district, not just stories, but also the height in feet. Happy to answer any of your questions of any of these specifics.
All right. Thank you. Is there any members of the board who have any questions for Mr. Lesswing on this? Are there any members of the public who would like to make comments? Seeing none, are there any online? All right, seeing none, then we would officially close the public hearing, and I will move for the adoption of ordinance 4223, and provide the board an opportunity if there's any discussion or comment. Okay, all right, seeing none, then we will then...
A second.
Oh, all right, thank you very much. Almost forgot that. We will then call the vote for ordinance number 4223, please.
For the adoption of ordinance 4223, Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Well, thank you very much. Then, that brings us to the next section of our meeting. If there's any unfinished business, anybody wishes to raise? Seeing none, any new business that somebody wishes to bring forth or announcements? Once again, seeing none, then I would like to thank everybody for the hard work this evening, and wish you all a good night. We are hereby adjourned.